King of the township of Precipiny Troy Hills Planning Board for Monday, April 21st, 2025 at 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given, that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at STEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Ms. Yoli, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Didich.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hernandez.
Here.
Mr. Math.
Present.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Stansiel.
Present.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
And we also have our board planner, Ms. Winter, our board engineer, Mr. Canjiano, and our board attorney, Ms. Thang.
If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, just as it is. All right, this meeting is open to the general public. Is there anyone here who has some item that they wish to bring to this board's attention that is not on our agenda tonight? Hearing and seeing none. We have some correspondence from Mr. John Miller of Inglisino Taylor requesting application number 24:524 be carried to May 5th, 2025 without further notice and with required extensions. Is there any?
The, the, thank you. The applicant's attorney submitted a letter on April 2nd just indicating that they're working on responses to the board professionals' reports, and they need some more time before they come before the board.
All right. Do I have a motion to carry the case to May 5th without further notice and with required, any further required extent, with the required extensions?
Motion, Meth.
Second. All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's carry this as notice to anybody here in the public who came here for application 24:524. It has been carried to May 5th without further notice. This is your notice. All right, we have some resolutions. We have application 24:510 Noel Manor Associates, North Bevoick Road, Block 497, Lot 2, minor site plan with C variance for a maintenance yard. Would somebody like to move that?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Didich.
A motion to approve resolution for application number 24:510 Noel Manor Associates, North Bevoick Road, Block 497, Lot 2, minor site plan with C variance for a maintenance yard.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Shaw, thank you very much. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Didich.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
All right, next is item 169, Lackawanna Book, Avenue, Block 136, Lot 33, redevelopment plan consistency review. I understand we have an adjustment to that?
Yes, just the draft that I had previously circulated had the incorrect title, but it's, as the chairman stated, it's just to recommend the adoption of the redevelopment plan based on our consistency review.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Hernandez.
All right, do I have a second, please?
Second, Meth.
Very good. Ms. Yoli, would you please call the roll?
Didich.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Shaw.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes. All right, we've gotten through those. That moves us to our item here. We have only one item tonight, application number 25:502, Metum, 700 Precipiny Road, Block 739, Lot 2, minor site plan with C variance for modification of a condition of a previous approval.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Corey Klein from the Law Firm of Sils Commissary and Gross on behalf of the applicant, Metum, a GE Vernova business, the applicant this evening. We submitted an application to modify a condition imposed upon a previously approved minor site plan with bulk variances in connection with the temporary modifications to an existing manufacturing facility, including the erection of a tent, office trailers, and an electrical room, and the relocation of existing equipment outside of the building on property located at 700 Precipiny Road and identified as Lot 2 and Block 739 on the tax maps of the township of Precipiny Troy Hills. The board previously approved the project on December 13th, 2021, and memorialized it in a resolution dated January 24th, 2022, with the condition that the temporary improvements remain for a period not to exceed three years. The applicant is here tonight requesting that the temporary conditions remain for an additional two years, and I'm going to give just a brief history to explain the reasons why we were asking for this additional time. As the board may be aware, the applicant has been storing tanks used in connection with its existing manufacturing operation, which involves drilling cooling holes in gas turbine engine components used at other general electric power plants in the proposed temporary, I should say, the existing temporary tent pending the demolition of the tank farm and the installation of new tanks in its place. The other temporary structures, including the office trailers, an electrical room, and a chiller, were relocated outside of the existing structure so that the applicant could continue operations while performing upgrades to its interior to allow for safer, more efficient, and more productive use of the property. At the time, the applicant was not prepared to commence with proposed upgrades because, one, the applicant had not decided on the specifics of the proposed upgrades considering rapidly evolving technologies, and, two, budget constraints would permit the applicant to perform such upgrades on a longer-term basis. The applicant has since decided to proceed with constructing improvements in connection with the amended preliminary and final major site plan approved by the board on June 5th, 2017, and memorialized by way of resolution adopted June 19th, 2017, and is prepared to submit for building permits to commence such construction. However, the temporary structures which were approved by this board on December 13th, 2021, memorialized January 24th, 2022, have not been utilized or operated to date. The applicant has been unable to commence construction on the ultimate project. So, in other words, we have not done, we have not opened the tent, the temporary improvements that are on the site for business, and I'll explain why. Since obtaining the resolution on January 24th, 2022, the applicant experienced issues complying with the terms of the resolution, particularly with regard to providing truck turning templates and ensuring that onsite conditions were consistent with the plans. The applicant submitted a package for resolution compliance on October 3rd, 2022. In response to comments from the board's professionals, the applicant's professionals revised the plans and revived it and arrived at an acceptable solution, leading to a second resolution compliance package submission on January 30th, 2023. Township issued a zoning permit on February 24th, 2023. Following issuance of a building permit, the applicant experienced issues from the building department and ultimately was able to pull permits on June 28th, 2023. The applicant completed construction of fully compliant temporary improvements and received a temporary certificate of occupancy on October 9th, 2024, just three months before the temporary approvals were set to expire. The applicant approached my office on October 22nd, 2024, and ultimately submitted the application before this evening on December 12th, 2024. Following three rounds of submissions to obtain completeness determination in January and February of this year, the board finally deemed the application complete and scheduled tonight's hearing on April 1st, 2025, just a few weeks ago. So that's what's basically what's been happening over the past three years, between getting through zoning compliance, building compliance, addressing any of the issues that the building department had. We finally have the temporary improvements which were existing at the time that we applied three years ago are finally at the point where we're able to use them and commence the construction of the main site. So that's why we're asking for another two years. The applicant anticipates that the construction will take up to two years and will require the temporary improvements to continue during construction. As such, the applicant is asking the board to extend the temporary approvals by an additional two years in order to allow the proposed construction to be completed and temporary improvements to be dismantled and incorporated into the existing facility as same will be improved in accordance with the 2017 approvals. The placement of the temporary structures would continue to temporarily reduce the number of parking spaces. Vehicles will continue to be able to maneuver throughout the parking area despite the placement of the temporary structures. There is some relief, technically I would call it, pre-existing non-conforming conditions that will remain. They were temporary, and the temporary nature of those improvements we're asking to be extended for another two years. And with that, I would like to first acknowledge that I provided the board with required, proof of required notice to property owners and publication of this, notice of this hearing in the appropriate newspaper, and I want to confirm that the board has jurisdiction to hear this application this evening.
Nora, we received all the proofs and revivals.
Yes, everything was.
Good.
Okay, great. So with that, I have one witness tonight, Mike Marinelli of Menlo Engineering, a licensed civil engineer, will testify regarding the proposed temporary improvements to the site. And although I do not plan on having them testify as part of my case in chief, representatives of the applicant are available should technical questions related to the operations at the site arise that Mr. Marinelli is unable to answer. So I'd like to call Mr. Marinelli and have him.
Mr. Chairman? I'm just going to move. No, all of us, just then. Never mind.
All right, before we get too deep into this, I'm actually going to turn to my professionals here and ask them to just comment on what we've just heard.
So basically, you're asking for an extension of time for the temporary improvements, took a extended period of time to get them all finally set up and ready to go, and by that time, they'd basically expired. That's the gist of it.
Do you have any?
Yes, and based on my understanding is there was a 2017 approval for which you're going to comply and complete, but you needed to go and get temporary approval for the temporary, or you needed to go get approval for the temporary tent in 2021, 2022, and both of those things had delays, and that's why we're here today.
That's right.
Okay. Yep.
All right. Mr. Canjiano, you have any thoughts that need to be?
No, if you could just, again, I know the attorney of the council had described it, but if you could just in your testimony give where we are now regarding the tents and the other temporary improvements and?
Swear it first.
Surely.
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry, before, do we need any waivers?
There were several things that were really not applicable as a result of the nature of the application. Some of the waivers were for the letter of interpretation or exemption or copy of an application, the DEP for wetlands. So that, it had already been provided, we just did not receive a copy, so that we provide as condition. The Highlands exemption determination, which is not applicable to this, floor plans, which, again, there's no interior work being done as part of this application. And that was it.
So we have one item?
Three, three items technically that are waiver requests. Floor plans, the DEP approvals or exemption, and the Highlands exemption application.
Do I have a motion approving the waivers listed in the ARH report of what, January 1/27, oh, January 27th?
March 28th would be the most recent one.
Oh, there it is, I'm sorry, got the wrong glasses on. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Meth.
Do I have a second?
Second, Didich.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, please raise your hand. Do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address for the record.
Sure, it's Michael Marinelli of Menlo Engineering, M-A-R-I-N-E-L-L-I. We're located at 261 Cleveland Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey. I'm a licensed professional in the state of New Jersey, have been so for the last 18 years, providing testimony in front of numerous boards across the state, including this one and two other occasions for this particular application. My license is still in good standing. I can give you more educational background if required, or?
Does anybody have any questions on the qualifications of the expert? Hearing and seeing none, sir.
All right.
Okay, so the board accepts the qualifications?
Yes. Thank you.
I use kind of a negative criteria approach.
Fair enough. Yeah, I've done this before, right here. So briefly, right, I put an exhibit up on the easel here. This is the site plan temporary plan dated last revised September 28th, 2022. This is part of the submission package, is part of this application. This is a depiction of the approvals that we received late in 2021, that was, received resolution early 2022. The subject building is the rectangle on the southwest corner of the facility, but a lot of the temporary improvements that we received approval for are located in that southeast corner of the building. There's a series of tanks there, there's an 18-foot-high canvas tent structure, if anybody hasn't seen it, with piping that connects it from the existing industrial building to that. There's also some accessory buildings, including an electrical room and a chiller. Again, these are all temporary structures that will allow the applicant to move some of their operations that are located on the southern side of the building, all right? On the very rear of that building, there's a series of tanks and whatnot in a structure that's become dilapidated over the years. And I'm only going through this all over again because I'm not sure who was and wasn't on the board last time this was approved. So the approval received back in 17 was to remove that structure off the south side of the building and replace it with a new portion of the building, new construction that would allow them to hold the tanks that are now, or will soon be, hopefully, contained within this temporary tent structure. Okay, so 2017, we got an approval to put a building addition on, tear down a portion of the building and add it back with new contemporary construction to provide necessary facilities for this site to continue to operate as it does today. Okay? In 2021, we came because in order to do that, they have to temporarily move these, this portion of the building, the operations that are in that portion of the building, into this temporary structure. Again, the board approved that, but it's taken some time to get, because there are a lot of regulations because of the types of materials that are being stored in the structure. In order to get through all of the code and building department regulations, they just recently, you heard October of this past year, received that final approval. But knowing that it was going to take several months to get the operations relocated into this, they wanted to open an application to extend the timeframe from what was previously granted as three years from 2021 or early 2022, frankly, until now. So we're here tonight seeking an additional two years on something that was already approved by this board. Okay? Now, as far as, I think Mr. Canjiano had asked about what's going on there today. And the answer is, all of the temporary improvements have been constructed and put in place and are ready to be operational. We're here tonight to seek that extent, this extension, so that we can, in fact, move those operations into those constructed facilities. Now, in order to, when this was constructed, there was a rear parking area in this, in this area, there was a 42 parking spaces in that southwest corner of the existing site. Those are being temporarily displaced. You heard back in 2021 that the site operates efficiently today, and in fact, since these temporary structures have been implemented, the site continues to work in an efficient, in efficient manner. So although there are only 65 spaces available on site, where 89 are required, the site continues to operate as effectively as it can. And these spaces, 42 spaces, will, one day, you know, once the addition is put on and the facilities from the temporary structures are moved back indoor, those spaces would, again, be available. So again, this, the parking variance that we're requesting is simply a temporary situation. You'll note that, I think it was in your engineer's letter, they had gone out and inspected the site. And I'll just kind of address those few items just for everybody's information. I'm speaking of the letter dated February 27th, 2025. There are a couple of items that are statements of fact, but when we get to page two, item four, it talks about specific things that are going on site and questions that relate to that. So if I can draw your attention to 4A, there's a picture of some, a porta john, some crate structures, which are parts and materials, and what are blue cabinets, those are toolboxes as they've been putting in the temporary units. This is basically a construction staging area for the construction of these temporary facilities. It's likely that these areas will also be, continue to be operated in that manner while they're building the new addition as well, the one that was approved back in 2017. Item B is a series of dumpsters. These are located on the angled southwestern property line in the rear of the existing parking area. These dumpsters used to be located in the back where the temporary structures are, but because of the, they can no longer get those tractor-trailers back there to load and unload them, they're temporarily being stored on that southwest corner of the existing structure. Some of them are for regular operations and some of them are part of the construction, but at the end of the day, we, as part of the 2017 approval, you'll note that there are four locations of dumpsters that are to be constructed immediately on the western facade of the existing facility. So again, this is, item B is a temporary situation. Item C, still under bullet four, but on page three, is related to some liquid containers that are on the southwest corner of the building. On the submitted plan, it's labeled as temporary frac tank, secondary containment for collection of water from damaged buildings. So it's a little bit of a misnomer. In the 2017 approval, this is where the frac tanks are ultimately to be located. However, in the temporary condition, there are these water containments and water containment structures. These are groundwater that has been retrieved and it comes and goes from the site as they tested. Because of the regulations of this particular site, they're constantly monitoring groundwater. There are a few monitoring wells on the southern side of the site as well, and they extract that water and store them in these containers. You'll note in that picture, I think the question was asked, secondary containment, there's a black containment system. In the picture, it was knocked down, but I was at the site earlier today, and it has, that has been fixed. That is the secondary containment. So should, again, this is just groundwater that's being tested, but should anything happen to those particular containment units, that black canvas structure, it, once water's on the inside of it, it holds up strong and holds any contaminations as a secondary measure of containment. And then with respect to items D and E, there were conditions of the 2021 approval to both include a bollard on the corner of the temporary tent structure, which is in place today. And then there's signage at the gate, there's a gate on that south, same southwest corner with access to the rear. And this was part of the, as Corey had mentioned earlier, in the going back and forth for resolution compliance when we did receive the temporary structure improvements approval, the fire company was concerned with not having full circulation. So we provided a turning movement that allowed the fire truck, and this was submitted, it's actually page two of the submitted documents, where a fire truck could at least get back to the tent area, but it would have to back out all the way. So the applicant had agreed, when we're going back and forth back in 2022, to provide signage saying that no other vehicles other than, other than required or authorized vehicles should be able to access the rear of the site. That would stop a layperson from driving back there, or a tractor-trailer, or a dump truck that doesn't belong back there. And those were, those signs are in fact on both the fence, and there's a sign post immediately adjacent to the fence that addresses that condition of our last approval. So in essence, everything that was requested as a temporary structure in 2021 is in place and ready to be utilized. The applicant's just looking for the board to act favorably upon the application this evening so that they can start moving, almost immediately, the operations into the temporary structures that they can build the proposed 2017 improvements. Just to clarify for the record, we are seeking relief, and this is all itemized in the review letter from your planner, ARH Associates, dated March 28th, 2025. But just to be clear, all of the variance conditions, and some of these weren't actually requested back in 2021, but I believe it's, and you'll hear in a second, it's more of an interpretation of, you know, setbacks from building to building. That wasn't, even though the buildings are in the same exact place, and the electric room is in the same exact place, everything is where it was approved, the interpretation of ARH is that some variance relief is required for setbacks between buildings. I'll go through that right now. So we're seeking relief for 20, 71 parking spaces, excuse me, I'm sorry, 65 parking spaces where 89 are required. The temporary tent is 28 feet from the rear property line, where minimum yard, rear yard setback is 46 feet. Again, this is a continuing condition that was approved back in 2021. We're talking about the nearest corner to the southerly property line. Additionally, we're seeking continuation of a 21.91-foot drive aisle. Again, this access aisle is not as wide as what is required by ordinance of 24 feet. It's an existing condition that we're just asking to continue. Item one, oh, I'm sorry, section 430-13A is related to the frac tank. I provide a little bit of testimony on that, but we're talking about the, these containers on the corner. Again, they're only holding groundwater in a temporary situation. The frac tank will, in fact, be part of the final improvements to the building. So that request actually isn't necessary. There's no relief being sought there. Again, section 430-13A is respect, setback distance to an accessory building, 4.1 feet are between the electrical unit. Now, these are the structures in the temporary improvements area, furthest to the east. The spacing between the temporary electrical room and the chiller is only 4.1 feet, where they're not permitted to be within six feet. So it's a, it's a small, again, continuing condition. Similarly, the electrical room is 4.1 feet away from the tent area that's 18 feet high, which lends me to the next relief we're seeking. Accessory structures are only permitted to be 15 feet. As you heard back in 2021, this particular structure is 18 feet tall. Again, it's a temporary structure that will be removed once the final improvements are done. And I think I said twice already, but I'll, section 430-2276A11 is to permit 65 existing parking spaces where 89 are required. Again, it's a temporary situation, 42 will be returned to the site once the final improvements are done and the temporary structures are eliminated.
No, I don't think I have anything further. Just one other thing. In the planner's report, under post-approval considerations, just wanted to note that we already received temporary certificate of occupancy. So we're just seeking an extension, so further outside agency approvals should not be required here. Essentially, they're ready to turn the lights on, start moving the stuff over and use these temporary improvements as soon as possible.
Could you please pull the microphone closer to you?
Sorry, thank you, thank you. We didn't want to do that without permission from the board because our approvals have admittedly expired. So the relief is granted tonight, we'll be able to relocate some of those operations to the tent and get to work almost immediately on the larger project, the permanent improvements to the structure.
Ms. One, can you go up?
As far as the outside approvals, I'm assuming they have all been wrapped up with the prior resolution compliance, so as far as that's concerned, that, that's fine. I don't think we were involved in the original application, so we may have taken a deeper look at some of the setbacks, and that's where that came out of. I just wanted to clarify the parking, because the resolution said that there were 71 parking spots and we only counted 65, I believe, so is that the existing condition is 65?
Yeah, the existing condition is 65, and I spoke of the, in the pictures in the engineer's letter, the dumpsters that are located along that angled part of the property line, there were six additional. were six additional spaces there at the time of application, but when they started building all of the temporary structures here, they're like, oh, what are we going to do with the dumpsters in a temporary situation? Again, there is a place for these dumpsters as part of the final layout, but six additional spaces were lost in order to move those dumpsters to that temporary location. But again, the site continues to operate in a safe and efficient manner. They have 105 employees, max shift is 20, so even with crossover, they need 40 some odd spaces and 65 are available. So there's more than adequate parking for the existing use.
And Mike, just to piggyback off that, I understand that during resolution compliance, Menlo Engineering had a series of correspondence with the building department to confirm that, you know, the loss of those parking spaces, and that was ultimately approved in order to address concerns about emergency vehicle access.
That's correct.
That's it.
Andrew, do you have any?
Yeah, he adequately answered my questions on what the construction materials and the dumpsters and the bollards. Obviously, it sounds like it's in, under construction now. So when do you anticipate the, so all the temporary structures are in place now, correct?
That's correct.
You'll be moving operations into the temporary facilities shortly.
That's correct.
How long do you anticipate for the permanent construction to take place?
So the relocation, as I understand it, is roughly two, between two and three months to locate, to move operations. Now, all of the infrastructure is there, but they actually physically have to move the operations to this tank system. That's going to take approximately two months. And then the construction, based off of the 2017 improvements, is going to be another year plus. So that's why we're asking for that with a little bit of flexibility, knowing how long it took for the temporary structures to get through to temporary CO. We just wanted to anticipate that and ask for a full two years of extension. But it is expected to be done within the next two years, complete.
And that relocation that you shook, called up the dumpsters and the loss of those couple parking spots, that won't conflict with the permanent construction?
It does not. They were all part of the initial 2017 site plan.
All right, and then the fire district memo from February kind of indicates that they don't have any issues with the site plan, however, the access must be kept clear for emergency vehicles around, and you have to sign it up?
That's correct.
That's all I have.
All right. If there are members of the board who have any questions on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. The members of the public who have any questions of this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Just to summarize briefly, again, we went through the rationale for the relief that we're seeking back in 2021. Again, the parking and rear yard setback variances and accessory structure setback variances will allow the parking area to be used as the temporary location of the aforementioned structures. The tent height shouldn't be an issue because it's not visible from the right-of-way. The pre-existing non-conforming drive aisle width will remain unchanged. The applicant is simply seeking to perform these vital improvements to what is a complex industrial operation, and the variances will terminate after the two years or following construction of the long-term improvements, whichever occurs sooner. As such, we would ask that the board look favorably on this application and all requested relief.
All right. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this case this time? Hearing and seeing none in favor? Hearing and seeing none. Are there any questions or comments from the board that they want to answer before we're done? This closes the evidentiary portion of tonight's case. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve application number 25-502 made on 700 Parsipanet Road Block 739 Lot 2, minor site plan with C variance for modifications of the condition of a previous approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Did he?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Danzio?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Very good. Is there anything else that needs to come tonight? Here's a reminder for all of you to write, do your financial disclosure statements. I'm replying just before I came here, which is why I was almost late, but.
Did you?
Nora, do you have anything else that the board needs to?
We just need a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.